I would like to call the order. The, the impact fee work session for Tuesday, October the 22nd. Madam Clerk, can you call the row please?
Brenham, Pew.
Here.
McBride, Livingston.
Here.
Teresa.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Baron, Walker, Mackey.
Here.
English, Newton.
Present.
Alright, thank you ma'am. Madam Chair.
Thank you Vice Chair Pew. Our next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Administrator Brown, do you have any changes?
No recommended changes.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
That's Madam Chair.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yeah.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride, Livingston. Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
E- uh, Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. So, the main item today for this work session, and as a reminder, it is a work session, so this item is for discussion and no action will be taken today. But item 3A is direct the administrator to research and present to council current laws and benefits of enacting impact fees in Richland County. The purpose is to help reduce the tax burden on residents by not having to pay the complete cost of development in Richland County. This original motion was established by a former council member, Bill Malinowski, and then, I guess later adopted by Ms. Newton. And here we are today for the follow-up. So Administrator Brown, I'll turn it over to you and staff to move forward.
Thank you Madam Chair. And this particular initiative is being headed up under ACA Jensen, so I'm going to actually ask him to approach the podium, do a brief introduction of where we are now, and then from there we'll proceed with the rest of the impact work session.
Thank you. You recognize ACA Jensen?
Thank you Madam Chair, ACA Eric Jensen for the record. Pleasure to be with you as always. Today we have Mr. Carson Bice, who in my opinion is the foremost expert in impact fees in this country. He's done hundreds of impact fee studies around the country, as well as many here in South Carolina. I know his work from former jurisdictions where I've been employed, and so I was very pleased when the, he was, his firm was selected to work with us. I'm not gonna take any more time, I'm going to turn it over to him. He has a brief PowerPoint presentation, after which there's a few slides that talk about process. It's, I, I caught earlier that you liked the boxcar thing, so I made a boxcar process, and I added that slide in just for you all. So, you'll see that at the end of the PowerPoint.
Are you referring to a roadmap, sir?
A boxcar roadmap, you got it. Put one of those in for you.
You have to stick with roadmap, we don't know a boxcar.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
A roadmap, so it's in there, that's the last slide today. But with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, to our consultant, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Eric. Madam Chair, members of council, Carson Bice, President of Tichler Bice for the record. I'm here today to talk to you about the impact fee feasibility study that we prepared for Richland County. I actually did the exact same process for you all, I wanna say in 2004, under Milton Pope, when he was here, and, and did the similar presentation, and I'm glad to be back in front of you today. So I don't know if there was any of you on the council at that point.
There was.
Okay, okay.
Just this one guy right here.
It's good to see you again, sir. Next slide, please. Yeah, as Eric mentioned, you know, we've been in business now for over 40 years, and we have a unique specialty that focuses on cost of growth issues, primarily impact fees and infrastructure financing strategies, as well as fiscal and economic impact analysis. We've done more of this type of work than any firm in the country. And you can see here, we've got a significant amount of South Carolina experience, we've done more impact fee work here than any other firm. Most recently around in this area, we completed this study for Lexington County, and I just kicked off Windsboro today. Next slide. Some, some impact fee basics. I guess I'll preface my remarks by saying that, you know, it may surprise some of you to find out that, you know, regardless of state in the country, we have very few infrastructure financing options available to us. Primarily they are the general taxes, whether it's property tax, sales tax, or income tax, and, and revenue structures, as you know, vary from state to state. And then we have impact fees, which have gained in popularity over the last 40 years. Then we have special districts, special assessments, similar vehicles, they have different names in different states. We have excise taxes are legal in some states, like in Maryland, where I live. Public-private partnerships are becoming more and more popular, also known as P3s. But there are very limited sources available to us, and so again, that's why impact fees have become much more popular, because they, they spread, they assign the cost to those, bringing the cost into the community, so to speak. In terms of impact fees in general, as most of you probably know, they are one-time payments. They're designed to offset new developments' impact on different infrastructure systems. They are not paid for by existing residents, this is not an annual charge. As I said, it's a one-time charge, typically collected at the time of a building permit. And it's designed for system-wide capacity projects that add capacity to your, to your infrastructure system. It's not a tax, and the reason I, I say that is, I can't tell you how many bodies that I've appeared before in the country where someone says, "This is simply a tax on new development," and it's important to differentiate a tax and a fee. A tax is primarily revenue raising in nature, depending on the state, you may have to go to the voters for approval. There's no relationship between the amount of tax you pay and the amount of services you receive, or, or the amount of infrastructure that you consume. And a fee is very different. A fee is typically designed to cover the cost of something. So, when the planning department sets its rates for subdivision review or site plan review, typically those fees are designed to cover the direct and indirect cost of that service. And with impact fees, we basically have a tighter criteria we have to meet. There are three prongs of a, of a legal test that we have to meet. First is need or nexus, so we have to demonstrate through the study that the community is growing, that growth is going to continue, and that growth is going to generate the need for additional infrastructure. That's what we call the nexus or need. We have to show benefit, and we show benefit in two ways. One is through the timing of the expenditure, and the second is through geographic benefits. So in a large county such as Richland, depending on the infrastructure category, we may have to set up benefit areas. And the idea here is that if I pay a fee in the south, but, but the money is being spent in the north, and I'm not gonna receive a benefit, I may have, may or may not have met the benefit test, okay? The fir-, the second part is timing, so, and that depends on the State Impact Fee Enabling Act. In South Carolina, it's a very specific act, which I'll go to, go into here shortly. But in South Carolina, we have to spend the money within three years of the planned date of the facility. And there is some confusion about that among our clients. Some people think it means, well, if I pay a fee today, I have to spend the money in three years. No. It's as if we have a school planned, or we have a fire station planned in 2028, we need to have spent that money by 2031, okay? So that's, that's the benefit test. And then we have to make sure that the fees are proportionate. And so that's why we simply don't have a residential fee versus a non-residential fee. We differentiate either by size of house or type of house, because in most communities, single-family residents have more people, they have more vehicles available, higher vehicle trip generation rates than multifamily, so they have to pay a fee commensurate with that demand. The same with non-residential. Retail typically generates more vehicle trips than office, and office generates more vehicle trips than industrial. Office has more employees than retail, et cetera. So the fees have to be commensurate with that demand, and that's what we mean by proportionality. Next slide, please. I wanna go over a few myths and misconceptions as it relates to impact fees. The first is, the, the most common I see from the elected bodies we work with, and that is, particularly in smaller communities, where they think if they adopt impact fees, it's the silver bullet that's, that's gonna solve all of your infrastructure financing woes, and we may even be able to reduce taxes as a result. And that's, that's simply not the case. You know, your, your CIP is, is full of both growth-related and non-growth-related projects. Depending on the approach we use for a particular infrastructure category, we have to define growth versus non-growth shares, because with impact fees, we can't charge a fee to correct existing deficiencies. We have to base the fee on our current levels of service in the community. We also have to give, account for credits, which I'll talk about here in a second. And then we also have to account for the fact that the largest cost is our O&amp;M cost, it's not the capital cost. And in our experience, you know, 15 to 25% of your total budget is the capital budget. So it's the real, it's really the operating costs that kill you, so to speak. I sort of touched on this next bullet, and that is existing deficiencies. A lot of jurisdictions get themselves into trouble when they base fees on adopted levels of service. For instance, we just had a park master plan done, and our aspirational level of service is seven acres per thousand, but we're, we're currently at five, right? We have to base the fee on the five acres per thousand versus the seven acres per thousand. And then there's another misconception or myth that's not on this slide that I'd like to talk about, and that is, that impact fees negatively affect affordable housing. And that doesn't have to be the case. In several ways, we can address that. One is, South Carolina Impact Fee Act does have some provisions related to waiving of fees for affordable housing. Also, depending on the, the way we design the fee, I mentioned earlier in the presentation that the fees for residential can be done by size of house. And under that approach, and I'm a big proponent of that, it helps with equity issues, it helps with affordable housing issues, it also helps with proportionality, because in most communities, the demographics will show that smaller homes have fewer people, they have fewer vehicles available. Also, smaller homes tend to be the less expensive, and so it makes the impact fees more affordable. You can also, as part of the implementation of impact fees, have policies related to affordable housing, and, and we can talk more about that as we get into the Q and A. Next slide. I'm not gonna get too much into the weeds here with, with methods, but there's basically three different ways we can calculate impact fees, and the simple way to think of it is, we can look to the past, the present, or the future. So when we look to the past, that means that we've oversized infrastructure, whether through foresight or by accident, whatever the case may be, we have excess capacity. And you see this a lot with utilities, where you may have a wastewater treatment plant that's designed at 10 million gallons a day, and it's currently operating at six. So the fee is designed to basically recoup the cost of providing that, that excess 4 million gallons that exist today, okay? That's what we mean by, by cost recovery, or looking to the past. When we look to the present, we call that an incremental expansion or a consumption-based approach. It's by far the most popular method for calculating impact fees. It's very formulaic in nature, where we, we take a snapshot of where your level of service is, like those examples I've given you, you know, five acres of parkland, or we've got so many square feet per person for police stations or fire stations, et cetera. And then we look at, well, what does it cost us to, to build fire stations on a per-square-foot basis? Or does it cost us to purchase apparatus? Or does it cost us to buy an acre of land? And we calculate the fees in those, using those kind of factors. Then when we look to the future, that's a plan-based approach, and typically, we like to see an adopted master plan, like a utility master plan, or a road master plan, and more importantly, a funding plan that goes with it, right? Because if we've got a plan, most of the time, that plan raises levels of service. And so we have to show what the growth and non-growth shares are, and how the funding is all going to work in order to make the impact fee legally valid. And so that's what we mean by, by past, present, and future in the different impact fee methodologies. Next slide, please. I mentioned credits earlier. So one of the things we have to guard against in impact fees is new development paying twice. Once through the impact fee, and then again through a future revenue stream. So, the bottom two bullet points here are sort of baked into the methodology, so to speak, as part of the fee calculation. So, we have to make sure that new growth isn't paying the impact fee, but also paying property tax or sales tax that's going to debt for the same type of facility. Or if we have dedicated revenues for certain infrastructure categories. So for instance, we work with jurisdictions that may have a sales tax that goes to schools, or roads, or parks, or dedicated property tax that goes to debt service. And so, we have to make sure that, again, I'm not paying that fee, but I'm also paying revenue that goes to retired debt, or goes to pay for capacity that I paid the impact fee for. The second type of credit isn't part of the methodology itself, it's spelled out in your implementing ordinance, and this is to guard against situations where, and this happens in many jurisdictions, where, for instance, we may have a fire impact fee, and that fire impact fee has not only apparatus, bricks and mortar, but also land. A lot of times, a developer will donate land as part of their master plan. Well, we have to make sure we enter into a development agreement, so that that developer gets made whole, because they've given you the land, but the products or the building permits on the ground are also gonna be paying an impact fee that has a land component. And all those get worked out legally through the development agreement. Next slide, please. So, I mentioned enabling statutes. So, and South Carolina is one of 29 states in the country that has an enabling statute. There are many things about the act that are very similar to most acts in the country, like, the first one, you know, impact fee revenue must be maintained separately in an interest-bearing account. That means we just can't co-mingle impact fee funds into the general fund, we have to account for them separately. We have to produce an annual report. As I mentioned earlier, in South Carolina, the monies must be spent within three years of the scheduled date of construction in the CIP. We have to produce an annual report, as I said, a comprehensive review and update every five years. And one thing that's very unique to South Carolina, it's the only act in the country that requires this. It requires an analysis that estimates the effect of imposing, imposing impact fees on affordable housing in the county. But the statute is moot on, if there has to be any amelioration, if you exceed, or if you determine that it does have a detrimental effect. It doesn't define what affordability is in terms of ratios, so it's very vague, it just says you have to do an analysis. It's very unique to South Carolina, it's been very controversial. Next slide, please. Now, in terms of what we were tasked to do, we were asked to look at our, or recommend how feasible it is, or how, or if we recommend pursuing impact fees for various infrastructure categories in, in Richland County. Those included law enforcement, or the sheriff, we looked at fire, we looked at emergency medical services, we looked at stormwater management, we looked at solid waste, we looked at both water and wastewater, and then we also looked at transportation. And what follows is going to be the summary of our findings. Next slide, please. So, a few sort of overarching themes here.
I'm sorry, can I stop you just a minute?
Sure, sure, sure.
Cause I feel like now you're gonna go into recommendations. Does any member of the body have any questions about this first part before he moves to his summary of findings? I think the understanding of the first part will help as we go into the second piece. You recognize Councilman Weaver?
Thank you. Dear woman Mackey. Yes, sir, the question I have, you said in South Carolina, the money has to be spent in three years. Would that include, like, could you put the money in a reserve account? Does that count spending it, or does it actually have to be like dollars in a building, or within three years?
Yeah, it was, it's three years within the planned date of construction, okay? So again, let's say that we're, we, we say we're gonna build a fire station in 2026. You know, I, I don't think there's any case law in South Carolina that's tested this, but in most states, as long as you are making progress, meaning that you have spent money on the design and engineering, you've purchased the land, you're making progress. That's what the development community wants to see. They just don't wanna see you sitting on money for 10 years and not spending it, right? And, and I think that, you know, it's in nobody's interest, in my opinion, to be litigious over, you know, nitpicky things where maybe the economy has turned a little soft, and instead of 26, 2026, we've now bumped that into 2027. I mean, those are just my, been in my experiences in, in other states. But you do have to make progress, you have to show that you're, you're, you're in good faith, there's good faith effort to, to provide the facility you planned.
Okay, one additional question if I can. Alright, so when would this fee, let's just say it's a thousand dollars a house, when would it actually be paid? Would it be paid by the developer when the plan is approved? Would it be paid by the buyer when they close?
Great question.
What's, what's your experience in that?
Yeah, great question. You know, over 90% of the jurisdictions we work with, it's, it's paid at the time of building permit, so it's whoever, and we sort of use the term developer interchangeably with home builder, right? There's a very distinct difference. Developer typically buys a land, develops it, puts in the infrastructure, sells lots, and a home builder comes in. The home builder is the one who typically pays, or whoever pulls the permit. And that's at the ti-, that's where the majority of the impact fees are paid. There are a few jurisdictions that collect the fee at time of certificate of occupancy.
Thank you.
Newton?
Thank you. My question is also related to the three years, and it's about transportation, and so if it's easier to answer this in that section, that's fine. I am aware of other municipalities and counties that will say something like, if the level of service on this road is a B, after you've done whatever you're going to do, the level of service on this road needs to remain a B. And so, as I look at transportation projects, which sometimes take a long time, or if you're having an objective like that, I'm not always sure how or if that can happen within three years, and so I'm wondering if you could address that type of impact? Cause building a building is one thing, but saying that this road is gonna have a certain level of service is different.
Right. Great question. If I understood it correctly, my answer would be this. We're talking two different things. One is, with, as part of the development process, it's, there's two things. One is, you've got your development exactions, right? So typically, when you go through the subdivision process, you may be asked to set aside land for parks, you may be asked to do a traffic impact study that says you have to build the turn lane, or do a certain improvement that's specific to your project. The impact fee is for system-wide capacity, so we're not looking road by road, we're looking at what level of service does the transportation network as a whole operate at? You may have some roads or individual segments, it may be a B, you have some segments that may be an F, right? But overall, our system may be working at a, as a, as a level of service C. So as I heard your question, I think you're talking more about sort of the, the onsite kind of transportation improvements that you may have to do as part of the subdivision process versus paying the impact fee for the major roads.
Right, and I think I might ask more questions when you get to the transportation section, cause I still feel like we're talking about different things. So I was, in my example, referring to a specific road, but if you look at, like, I'll give you a hypothetical, there's a community that I can think of where there probably aren't 200 homes on the road. Two-lane road, this community feels pretty rural in that section. They're about to get a housing development that's gonna be 199 houses. That's gonna have a huge impact on this two-lane road that doesn't have 199 houses on it already. And so I was trying to figure out how or if impact fees might be able to affect this situation, but it sounds like, as you're looking system-wide, you're saying, "It's not just this road, maybe it's feeder roads," or what have you. So, unless it's appropriate here, I'm happy to wait until we get to transportation, but that's an area that I'm particularly interested in understanding what our options are.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, I think this is the, the section to talk about that, cause I'm just gonna talk about transportation in broad brushstrokes when we get to, to that part, but, I mean, I guess the answer would be, if, I mean, one, if you decided to pursue transportation, you would need to decide what classification of roads are we gonna be improving, right? Is it gonna be primarily expanding arterials, building new arterials? Is it gonna be arterials and major collectors? So that's the first thing, is, you know, cause we've got different classifications, collect, minor collectors, major collectors, arterials, minor arterials, et cetera. So what, what roadways are we looking to improve? And the second part of your question is, you know, maybe that road in question is the type of road that we're looking to expand as part of impact fees. And if that's the case, then impact fees could be used to expand portions or all of that, that road, if it's, if it's part of the impact fee plan.
Thank you. I'll have more questions later.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Ms. Baron?
Thank you. So I did have one question, kinda, you mentioned it twice, but I'm still not real clear on it, and that is, when we look at affordable housing, and you said that there are ways that they can be taxed so that they're equitable. And then you made, you made a statement or mention that there have to be other policies that have to be created alongside of, I guess, the existing laws that have already been in place. So these other policies that have to be created, is that Richland County ordinances that have to be created, or are we looking to our friends at the State House to take care of that for us?
Good question. Typically, this is at the local level. So for instance, we've worked with jurisdictions that have various affordable housing policies, and they, and they will make a conscious effort, because they've got statements in their strategic plan, or their comprehensive plan, or they've had an affordable housing policy, et cetera, et cetera, where they may set up a fund, for instance, that, Hillsborough County, Florida is one of those, where Tampa is, that I'm familiar with, where, you know, they set aside money each year, because you have to make the because you have to make the, the impact fee plan whole. So if we, if we waive $1 million in impact fees in the name of affordable housing, they transfer money that they've set aside to make the plan whole so that those, or so that those units don't have to pay the impact fee. So that's an example of a policy.
So, if I may, with that, if that is something that we decided to do on the affordable housing, when we talk about making the impact fees whole, then would we get those funds from our general fund? Or could we transfer them from other impact fees that have been collected?
It would have to be non-impact fee revenue.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, yeah, so good thing we, we get ready to have one of those housing meetings to, because that, that's definitely something. And then I did have one final question that when we look at, right now, the county, we're looking at our comprehensive plan. And when you talk about the future-based impact fees, I think that's how, that what you phrase. Plan-based, plan-based, but it's for the future, right? I'm mixing them up. So when you, the plan-based, it, it sounds like that it's a pretty good time, if this is something that this body decides to do, because we are making some revisions to our comprehensive plan, that the two could work in tandem?
Certainly.
And it, is it traditionally, one goes before the other? Or what, what is the best practice there?
No, but it, it helps when you do have a, have a recent or, or, you know, a concurrent planning effort. That certainly informs the process. But a plan-based approach typically is based on a facility master plan versus more of the comprehensive plan. So if you've had a road master plan done, or a utility master plan, or a parks and rec master plan, that's typically what it's based on. But sometimes we do refer to, you know, because most plans have a capital improvement element or something like that, that sometimes informs the, the fee. Also, another thing I did not mention that is timely relative, relevant to the comprehensive plan is that, you know, most of the communities we work with forget the fact that impact fees are actually a land use regulation. They just view them as a reg, as a revenue source. But it's actually a land use regulation. And there are ways, particularly with transportation, utilities, sometimes fire. We can, we can, we can craft transportation fees, for example, to incentivize policies or behaviors you're trying to encourage in the comprehensive plan. So for instance, if you're trying to encourage mixed-use development and higher density of multimodal transportation, we can craft fees where you get discounts if you meet certain density criteria, mixes of use, availability of transit, et cetera, et cetera, so that the fee is tiered and is less, and they can be treated as floating zones. So you don't have to have an area of the, of the county. It can be just, if you come through the door and you meet these criteria, it's called a trip exchange district. And so you have different trip generation rates because of the higher rate of internal trip capture, and so you pay a different impact fee. So we can craft impact fees to help, you know, incentivize land use or economic development or affordable housing policies that you're trying to encourage as part of your planning efforts.
Took me right where I needed to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Glad.
Thank you. If you proceed.
Yes, ma'am. So, summary of findings, and this is no surprise to anybody here, but the county has experienced steady and increasing development, and that development's likely to increase into the future. Just between 2017 and 2022, you know, there were 1,761 new housing units annually. And of that, 100, or 1,038 was being averaged in the unincorporated county. And like many communities we work with around the country, the county is finding it harder and harder to keep pace with this growth and fund services at a desirable level of service. I'm sure that, like many communities, folks are moving in from other areas of the country, and they have level of service demands that may exceed the folks that have been here for the last 20 years. And that's a common, common thing that we see. 68% of the existing residents live in the unincorporated areas. And as you probably know, you have some services that are countywide in nature, and then you have some services that are provided only to incorporated residents, and that includes law enforcement. And so that, that places a higher service burden if more of these residences are locating within the unincorporated areas. Next slide, please. And like most counties in South Carolina, you know, the county's revenue structure lacks diversity. Your primary growth-related tax is property tax, and that funds approximately 64% of your, your general fund operations. And as you're well aware, you know, the different costs that we have, such as energy and health insurance and price of construction materials has been rising over the, over the past several years and exceeds the, the rate of housing value increases in the future. And you, you know, if you want to maintain current levels of service, both from a CIP perspective, but also an operating perspective, you'll either find yourself in a situation where you either have to raise taxes or find new revenue sources. Otherwise, the, the choice is that you just accept lower levels of service over time. And that will certainly hurt you from an economic development standpoint, much more so than implementing impact fees, because that will always be an argument. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the sheriff. You know, the sheriff's department is one of the largest law enforcement agencies in the state. And as growth has, has occurred, the department's been facing an increasing number of calls for service. As the county grows, that demand is likely to, to expand. And you'll have to expand infrastructure if you want to maintain current levels of service. And at this point in time, we know the county is currently making improvements to the detention center. Our conversations also indicate that you're likely to build additional substations to accommodate growth in the future. And these substations will be in the unincorporated county. And the county will also likely build up to three additional magistrate facilities throughout the county. So given this planned level of investment, we highly recommend that, that you pursue a law enforcement or sheriff or public safety impact fee. Next slide. Turning our attention to fire. The county provides fire service to the unincorporated area through the Columbia-Richland Fire Department, which was established through an interlocal agreement in 2012, and that agreement was renewed again in 2018. The county is responsible for all the county-owned stations, while the city is responsible for the city-owned stations. Additional growth-related fire stations can be constructed either by the city or the county, but it has to be at their expense. And the 2018 agreement lays out the need to identify new locations for at least three to five new stations. And the current capital improvement plan contains several pieces of net new apparatus, meaning that they're not just replacement apparatus. It's adding to your, to your fleet inventory. So given that planned level of investment, we recommend that you pursue a fire impact fee that includes components, both for additional bricks and mortar, station space and land, but also additional vehicles and apparatus. Next slide. Now, the county provides EMS protection to residents in both the municipalities and the unincorporated areas. Just like fire and police, EMS is anticipating a higher call volumes as the county grows, and will need to expand both the number of stations as well as its, its fleet of vehicles and apparatus. Additionally, the county has plans to construct an emergency operations center that has an estimated cost now of $28 million. Given that level of investment, we recommend that an impact fee be prepared for EMS.
Ms. Chair?
You recognize Ms. Newton?
So, one of the principles of impact fees that you mentioned earlier, as I understood it, was that if an impact fee was assessed, you had to show that it's going to impact this area. So you couldn't have a new subdivision in, let's say, Mr. Brandom's district, which is some distance away from mine, and then use the, the benefit of those funds in my district. As it relates to something like EMS or the operations center that you've mentioned here, where it's, it's only going to be physically located in one district. It's not going to be located physically everywhere, but it is going to serve everywhere. Is that something that would be able to be applied, let's say, across the board, for lack of a better term? Or is it something that has to be physically proximate to that center?
I think you misunderstood my, my, my comment.
Okay.
I said, we may have to set up benefit areas.
I did it here, the may, okay.
Okay, so, so here's, here's the challenge, is that for most services, a city or county usually provides a uniform level of service, right? So fire is a perfect example of that. Because of the redundancy of stations, fire is typically provided on a county-wide or a city-wide level of service. So everybody, everybody benefits from that because the fire station closest to my house may be covering for a fire station in another area, and a fire station over here may be covering for my geography, right? So typically, fire is something that's done county-wide or city-wide because of the nature of that. If we're in a situation where there's a natural divide, whether it's a river or a mountain range or something that, or the lack of a bridge, and we're only getting development concentrated in one area, then we may have a hard time saying that everybody benefits from this fire station. So in that situation, we may have to set up a collection expenditure zone. Or with schools, I'm, I'm sure you guys are familiar with Lancaster County. So we did a school impact fee there. All the growth in Lancaster is near Indian Land and Lancaster, southern areas, not getting much.
Here, sorry.
Lancaster.
The South Carolina pronunciation is Lancaster.
I am, I'm from Tennessee originally, and I, I thought I was doing a good job, but I guess I wasn't.
You, you, you were there, you know, you gotta go up to, to Pennsylvania, yeah. It's, it's Lancaster.
All right, Lancaster, Lancaster.
Lancaster.
Yeah.
Go on.
Our VP's son is going to Louisville University, and she keeps calling it Louisville. I think, no, it's Louisville. So anyway, I appreciate that, so.
In that place?
So we, we did the school fee, and most of the growth is in south, or excuse me, in the north. And so there's very few residential units being permitted in the south. And so that's an example of why we had to set up zones there because if I collect a fee from one of the 10 homes that gets built in the southern part of the county and then build all my school capacity up here, and we're not busing students up there, and we're not redistricting, I've got a benefit problem, right? But in most counties, like when we did Beaufort County's fees, that was, we did, there was a north zone and a south zone, and you could spend that money anywhere in there because of attendance boundaries being shifted, school choice, et cetera.
Thank you.
So it's a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move to water and sewer?
Yes, let's keep on.
So the county has, you know, water and sewer services by many different service providers. As I, as I understand it, you don't have an impact fee or a system development charge for your existing systems. There is a connection charge, however, but as I understand it, it's basically just covering the cost of, you know, tapping into the system, et cetera. So we do, do feel that you should consider an impact fee for water and sewer. And depending on the availability of excess capacity, the fee could be developed either using a cost recovery to basically pay yourself back for excess capacity or your investment in the system, or depending on whether you need to expand the system to add additional capacity, we could do the, the fee using a plan-based approach. But either way, I think it's a viable, a viable impact fee. We, we skipped, oh, we skipped two, three, actually. Sorry. Got so flustered with the Lancaster that I, I, I pressed the buttons here. I skipped stormwater and transportation and something else. So let's go to stormwater. So stormwater is perhaps the most difficult impact fee to, to design, and in my opinion, really doesn't lend itself to an impact fee very well because in the lion's share of communities we work with, you know, most of your stormwater problems are a result of, for lack of a better term, sins of the past, where, you know, you had inadequate subdivision regulations 30 years ago. And, and most communities we talk to, we say, okay, if you've got $100 million in stormwater needs, if we shut the door tomorrow and never let another house in, would you still need to spend that $100 million? In most cases, that answer is yes. And so it's very difficult, and a utility, a stormwater utility is a much better option. The other challenge, if you, if we determine that it does make sense to do an impact fee, you almost have to have a stormwater master plan that's been done with hydrologic modeling to show what project, or what percentage of certain projects are growth-related versus correcting existing problems. Otherwise, we have to treat everybody the same. And what happens is, is you end up maybe collecting $10 million for a $100 million problem. And by collecting that $10 million, you've obligated yourself to spend the 90, right? Because the moment you collect that first dollar of impact fee, it's essentially a contract with the development community that says, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, right? And so stormwater is a, is a dicey one from my perspective. And, you know, we're, at this point, we are hesitant to recommend an impact fee for stormwater until we've had a chance to review the master plan that's ongoing right now, determine what those findings are, and then maybe an impact fee makes sense, or, or maybe a stormwater utility is a better option. Solid waste, right? Okay. So the county operates two drop-off centers and a recycling site. We did solid waste fee recently in, in, in Ori County as well as Beaufort County. And you also have, you know, vehicles and equipment that, that exceed the $100,000 threshold that's needed in South Carolina. And conversations with county staff indicate that the county is in the process of actively identifying and acquiring sites for future drop-off centers. And so that makes that a viable impact fee category as well. It wouldn't be one of the higher cost, or higher, higher impact fees in sort of the, the order of magnitude, but it still would generate a significant amount of money. Transportation. So there is little doubt that continued growth in the county will generate an increase in not only vehicular, but also person trips on the county's network. The county does have a voter-approved transportation penny tax program, which uses a 1% sales tax to provide transportation projects throughout the county. The transportation penny tax opens up several opportunities in my mind as it relates to infrastructure, especially if the program is renewed. If the county chose not to go to the voters to renew the transportation penny, the county obviously would be without a dedicated transportation funding source and would certainly need a transportation impact fee. So either way, I think a transportation impact fee should be pursued. Obviously, if the penny goes away, it, it fills in the gap, so to speak, with a revenue source. But also, the penny allows you to, as I mentioned earlier, you know, you're not allowed to really correct existing deficiencies unless you've got a funding plan in place. And if you've got a dedicated funding source like the penny, that's an opportunity to leverage transportation impact fees to increase levels of service because you've got an identified funding source that can backfill, so to speak. Or you can choose to, you know, some jurisdictions just choose not to co-mingle funds. They'll say, our penny sales tax, you know, particularly if it's not, if it's sort of broad-based and wasn't allocated to these, you know, 10 projects or whatever, they'll use that for road maintenance and repair and use the impact fees for capacity. Or they'll set aside, to say, like, the, the fee we did in York County, which never got political approval, was that here are the sales tax projects, and here are the impact fee projects. And that's what we did in Beaufort County as well. So transportation is ripe in my mind for, for an impact fee as well. And then we talked about water and sewer, and that's it. So happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Ms. Chair?
You recognize Ms. Newton?
So you've given us a few different categories for which we can consider impact fees. When impact fees are assessed, does it tend to be, okay, we're going to assess a transportation fee, or we're going to assess an EMS fee? Or is it something that ends up looking like the property tax bill for your car, where it's a little for this, a little for that, a little for this, a little for that?
It's the, it's a little bit for this, a little bit for that.
Okay.
So, so the study will show that the, I'm just going to make up numbers here.
Sure.
The police impact fee is $550 a house. The fire impact fee is $786. The transportation impact fee is $1,600. And then there'll be a total amount. But if you implemented, let's say you adopted 100% of the recommended fees for each category, you would be keeping each of these in a separate account. There'd be a fire account, an EMS account, a transportation account.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I, can I add to that?
Sure.
Because I've made, this may come up, is we, because of equal protection issues, we, we have to either, we can't discriminate against land uses. So we can't say, we're going to adopt 100% of transportation for residential, but only 50% for non-residential. Or we're going to adopt, or not have a fee for retail, but only office and industrial, right? So that can get us into trouble. But you could say, you could choose to adopt 100% of transportation, but only adopt 50% of fire and 25% of parks, as long as you're treating everybody equally.
And then, and this may be a question for our staff, what is the mechanism for, say, the county sets whatever impact fees that it sets, and then looks at and says, hmm, maybe we need to tweak this? What, you know, what is the revision process for that?
Good question. So you can, as far as I know, you can tweak it down just by having probably just a public hearing. I don't know if you can tweak it down administratively. public hearing, I don't know if you can tweak it down administratively. You couldn't increase it over what we recommended unless you had a study that assumed that. So we've had clients that say, well, we think the transportation fee should be more than 13, $1,300 a house. Well, the numbers don't say that, right? So you're stuck with 1,300.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
You recognize Mr. Livingston?
My, my question, kind of a general, general question. From your experience, what are some of the major problems from a legal, from a legal and statutory requirement process that you have to, we have to deal with, when you're talking about implementing impact?
Yeah, so my experience has been, it's more with the administration of the program. Uh, like when our clients have been sued, which hasn't been very often, and, and only one has been methodological, and that was, uh, Fort Mill School, which I'm sure you guys know, we prevailed twice, uh, in that, in that, that court ruling. But most of it has to do with the, the jurisdiction not spending the money properly. So for instance, clients get sued because, you know, they've been collecting a park impact fee for 10 years, and they haven't spent any dollars. Or, you know, they've, you know, we've got a client in, in Arizona right now that's, that's panicking because they've got 10 years to spend their police impact fee, and the police chief's telling them, we don't need anything. So, so now they're in a situation, they may have to refund the money, right? Uh, so that's what gets you in trouble the most, is just not administering your program. Uh, you know, I've had, I've even seen clients, you know, putting the money in the general fund, right? That's what gets you into trouble.
Okay, um, Ms. Baron, can you just do one question, and then, and I, and then I want to get to Brannum. I want to be mindful, because we do have a 3 o'clock committee meeting, and staff needs time to change over.
My question is just to follow up to Ms. Newton's question. When you talked about, um, how they're divvied up, uh, earlier you mentioned that, uh, impact fees, let's say, in my district, if we're, you know, we're building something, uh, that is specific to my district, would there be subcategories, um, as a part of that? So how do you, or how would we, um, allow for the dollars that are only to be spent in a particular area? Because if I understood you correctly, there are certain impact fees that if they are for a particular district, you can't send them over to Brannum, because they were, they were for seven. So from that perspective, because I can, I can see how what you just mentioned, where some of the challenges would be financially, that could possibly get us in trouble, is not having these.
Right.
These pockets.
Right. And so, and again, you may have to have districts, right? We'd have to get into it to find out. But if you did have districts, you know, most communities, as large as you are, uh, typically have a person or a position that is called the impact fee program coordinator, the impact fee administrator, and they are the ones that, that track this kind of thing and make sure that the money is, is spent within the district. If, if that's the, if, if we set up benefit districts, they, they make sure of that. Uh, they're the ones that publish the annual report, they're the ones that, you know, their, impact fees are complicated, right? I mean, part of your ordinance is gonna be, you know, setting up, uh, avenues for an appeal. So, you know, when we do impact fees, you know, impact fees are based on averages. And so, you know, you've got, you sort of select prototypes for different land uses based on, you know, what you typically see in Richland County. So we may select, you know, for the industrial prototype, we may, you know, choose light industrial, and use its ITE code, but somebody comes through the door and says, you know, I've got a, I've got a, a server farm, and, you know, you're using light industrial, and that says, you know, we generate two employees per thousand square feet, and we're gonna have two employees for 100,000 square feet. We don't fall into this category, so you have to have a provision so that I can come and make an argument that I don't fall into this category, and, and it's basically called an independent fee calculation. And you have the ability to approve or deny that, but you have to, have to provide for that in the ordinance. And so these types of things are gonna come up, waivers and exemptions and that sort of thing. So it would behoove you to have somebody who just oversees the impact fee program.
Thank you. Brannum?
Thanks for being here. It was a great presentation. Um, would you say that $1,600 number you were throwing out earlier, just, you know, for conversation's sake, might be, like, realistic for our jurisdiction and our market for the patient?
I have no idea.
Okay.
But, I mean, transportation fees, I mean, sort of the hierarchy of fees are water, sewer, transportation, in terms of how high they are, uh, but they can be in the thousands.
Okay. I, I just, if, this all feels like relatively small amounts of revenue generated. I mean, if we're talking, like, like these numbers for 1,800 houses a year, just for a, a line item that might call for $1,000 on an impact fee, $1.8 million to the whole county for a year for that one item? So, uh, I, I, particularly when I think about transportation, because typically those projects are just so expensive. Do you have any, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, so, so accounting, I mean, if you guys had a transportation fee, I mean, the non-residential cat, fees would be high. So you, I would expect you to be generating, if you had a transportation fee, several million a year, just in transportation alone.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, overall, thank you for the information. I, I do, and I'll just speak for myself, I won't speak for everybody else, I think it was a lot of, of good information. Um, definitely is a lot that I would like for us to dive into more. I know we don't have the time to do that today, um, but would love to hopefully, whether that's in a committee setting, or some other future setting with this body, to look at some of these recommendations and dive in a little bit deeper and, and understand what that looks like or could look like, uh, for us. But I do thank you, uh, for this information as a whole. Um, any other thoughts, comments from the body before we wrap up? All right? A.C. Jensen or Administrator Brown? Oh, I'm sorry. Who's covering this? Eric?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really briefly, what I call a boxcar, what you call a roadmap, is up on the screen there. That is just very simply how this process could play out timewise. Um, I'll share this with the council, so you don't have to, you know, study it now. But generally, it, it's probably close to a year from start to finish, from today till you could be, um, adopting something.
Thank you. We're at item number four, which is adjournment.
Second.
Motion is second, Madam Clerk.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.